I'd like to call the meeting to order. Give the roll call, please.
Alderman Foley.
Here.
Alderman Tolaner.
Here.
Alderman Hodel.
Here.
Alderman Ship.
Here.
Alderman Austin.
Here.
Alderman Clark.
Here.
Alderman Mayberry.
Here.
Mayor Pauly.
Here.
Go out, please stand for the pledge, followed by the invocation by Alderman Ship. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we gather tonight and bow our heads, I ask that we take a moment to think about those here in America, in particular those down in the southeast who have been experiencing tornadoes, the unfortunate tragic loss of life from those terrible storms. And we think about them and their communities and their effort to assess the damages and mourn for those who've been lost and the possessions that have been lost, and pray for their efforts to come together and rebuild and move forward as one community. And think about the first responders and the agencies of government whose purposes now more than ever need to be to protect and promote the sanctity of all life and protect people's dignity during times of severe storms and misplacement. Amen.
Okay, minutes of the meeting of January 16th, 2017.
Move to approve the minutes as printed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Update Rock Island, I have five items tonight. The first one is on Tuesday, January 24th, there will be a general student recital done by Augustana College students at Wallenberg Hall in the Dank Memorial Building at the Augustana campus. Concert starts eight o'clock PM and is free to the public. For more information, please call 794-7323. The Quad Cities Ukulele Club will put on a performance on Wednesday, January 25th, at the Main Library located at 401 19th Street. Come enjoy and kick back with your family at this free show from 6 till 7:30 PM. On Thursday, January 26th, the Main Library will host a gaming night for youth between the ages of eight and 12, and 12 and 18. It's a free event, so join us and play Wii, U, Xbox 360, board games, and of course, snacks. Hope to see you there. The Quad Cities Builders and Remodelers Association Home Show is February 3rd, 4th, and 5th at the QCCA Expo Center. Friday hours are noon to 8:00 PM, Saturday 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and Sunday 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Ticket prices are $8, or pick up tickets at Hy-Vee and get a dollar off each. Use 16 to under, get in free. On Friday, seniors 60-plus, get in for only $5. Visit www.qcbr.org for more information. And finally, the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, Office of Water Resources partnering with the Illinois State Water Survey, Rock Island District, US Army Corps of Engineers, and the City of Rock Island to examine flood risk in the Mississippi River watershed. This means that survey crews will be in the flood risk areas beginning in mid-January and continue through the spring. This work will require these crews to briefly come onto individual properties to collect evaluation information to determine potential flood threats to homes and businesses in the community. No disruption of property is anticipated. Let's update Rock Island for this week. Next, I have a proclamation declaring January as Human Trafficking Awareness Month. I believe Maggie Tinsman is going to accept it. Maggie, correct? So if you want to come up to the podium, I'll read the proclamation, then I'll bring it out to you, and you can make a few comments. Whereas the United States was founded upon the principle that all people are created with the unalienable right to freedom, and added the 13th Amendment to the Constitution, making slavery illegal, and whereas human trafficking is modern-day slavery, claiming millions of victims worldwide, and founded in the United States most often in the form of sexual exploitation, forced labor, involuntary servitude, and debt bondage, and whereas this horrific crime which denies human dignity and freedom and fuels organized crime exists, and whereas even though awareness of this crime is growing, human trafficking continues to go unreported due to its isolating nature, the misunderstanding of its definition, and the lack of awareness about its indicators, and whereas increased community education on how to identify victims of human trafficking, along with increased knowledge of local resources and services for those affected by these criminal actions, can help restore freedom and dignity to identified survivors, as well as help diminish the number of future victims. And whereas fighting human trafficking is a shared responsibility, the efforts by our local community to promote the yearly observance of Human Trafficking Awareness Month in January enacts one of these examples of the continuous commitment of the United States and the State of Illinois to increase awareness of and to actively eradicate human trafficking. And whereas the City of Rock Island joins Breaking Traffic, a program of Family Resources, in their dedication to providing community outreach and education, legislative advocacy, and comprehensive services to survivors of human trafficking, now therefore, identity Pauly, Mayor of the City of Rock Island, declare January 17th as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in the City of Rock Island, and do urge all citizens to join in this observance. Thank you. Maggie, if you pull that microphone down a little bit. Please.
Well, thank you all very, very much. I first want to recognize that I'm here with the Executive Director of Breaking Traffic, which is a program now of Family Resources, and also Jane Hoffman is from Rock Island. It is on the Advisory Council for Breaking Traffic, as am I. We greatly appreciate that the City of Rock Island has made this proclamation, which declares January Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Awareness Month. As an initiator of the law, making human trafficking a felony, and the founder of Breaking Traffic, and now connected with Family Resources, and I'm the current Vice President of Iowa's Network Against Human Trafficking, we all thank you for recognizing how important this issue is, because trafficking or slavery occurring right here in the Quad Cities is indeed hard to believe, but it is right here in River City. We need all our citizens to learn about trafficking or slavery so that we can become part of the solution to this highness crime. Lately, law enforcement has taken a big step in prioritizing this crime in both in Iowa, the Department of Public Safety, and the Office of the Attorney General, but locally, I'm most pleased to have on our council both the police chiefs from Bettendorf and Davenport, but I'm looking for someone also from Rock Island as well, because we are a by-state council. So we would like a recommendation sometime from you all of who we can have on our Breaking Traffic Council. Law enforcement's involvement is critical, as drugs, which is one of their priorities of law enforcement, I know, and human trafficking are closely connected. All drugs aren't human trafficking, but human trafficking is all connected with drugs. And it's most important, I think, that our Quad Cities be free of an element that destroys basic human rights. Like you, we want our communities to be family-friendly and places of which we are extremely proud. So thank you for doing this.
Goodness.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A special ordinance amending Chapter 14, Article 2, Section 14-17 of the Code of Ordinances by changing the number of members of the Rock Island Park and Recreation Board.
Motion to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance.
Motion to second. Any questions or comments?
Yes, I do have to abstain from this item since I've been newly appointed to the park board, so I'll be abstaining.
With that, roll call.
Alderman Foley.
Aye.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Hodel.
Abstain.
Ship.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Okay, motion approved. Item nine.
A special ordinance amending a zoning district and zoning map at 909 Third Avenue.
Moves to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance.
Second.
Motion to the second. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, roll call.
Alderman Foley.
Aye.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Hodel.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Motion approved. Item 10, A through D.
Move to accept the reports unauthorized payments as recommended.
Second.
Motion to the second. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, roll call.
Alderman Foley.
Aye.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Hodel.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Motion approved. Item 11.
Claims for the week of January 13th through January 19th in the amount of $1,1384.02 in payroll for the weeks of January 2nd through January 15th in the amount of $1,327,929.49.
Move to allow the claims in payroll.
Second.
Motion to second to allow. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, roll call.
Alderman Foley.
Aye.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Hodel.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Motion approved. Item 13.
Report from the Executive Department regarding proposed amendments to Chapter 3, Section 3-11, and Chapter 8, Article 3, Division 2, Section 8-97 of the Code of Ordinances as it relates to video gaming licenses.
Motion to approve the proposed amendments as recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second.
The motion to the second. Any questions or comments?
Will this impact anybody who currently has a gaming, video gaming license?
No, will not.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I certainly understand the reason for this action.
All right, hearing no other questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion approved. Item 14.
Report from the Fire Department regarding a proposed amendment to Chapter 6, Article 2, Section 6-25 of the Code of Ordinances as it relates to electronic submission of all fire and life safety systems installation and inspection reports.
Move to approve the proposed amendment as recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second.
The motion to the second. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion approved. Item 15.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding the emergency contractor rotation list.
Motion to amend the...
Motion to approve. Motion to approve the emergency contractor rotation list as recommended by staff.
Second.
We have a motion to the second. Questions or comments?
Mayor, I'll be abstaining from discussion in the vote of this item.
Okay. Hearing now, roll call.
Alderman Foley.
No.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Hodel.
No.
Ship.
Abstain.
Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
No.
Mayberry.
No.
Okay, voted down.
Mayor, I'd like to bring back a motion.
Okay.
Motion to amend the emergency contractor rotation list to those companies who are incorporated in the city of Rock Island, corporate headquarters, to include Langman Construction and Valley Construction. Second.
Go ahead, okay. You know, I was just saying, so you're saying those are the only two that can do emergency repair?
That are incorporated and have their corporate headquarters in the city of Rock Island, yes.
So ultimately, nobody else anywhere could do it, just those two?
Right.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, Mayor, that's the reason I brought it up about a year ago, that we should know who we're paying. And as Alderman Foley has said, this is for businesses in Rock Island. So I would be in agreement with him.
I think the one you're eliminating, I think, has done good work for us over the years. I understand we had one major job they didn't do good, but on repairs, they've done a fine job. So, this is a motion and a second. If there are no other comments?
I have one question, I guess, with regard to, and I think maybe it was just a misstatement, but you'd indicated incorporated in the city of Rock Island, and there wouldn't be any actual businesses incorporated in the city of Rock Island. I think what I heard you say was with their corporate headquarters. I just wanted to clarify that because actually they would be incorporated either through Springfield and the state of Illinois or perhaps out in Delaware.
Corporate headquarters, my apologies.
Mayor, I understand what you were saying, but with that company, we still have legal things that are going on. And until those...
I would think, I'm not sure that...
Thank you, sir. Just regardless, move forward.
Now, I have one question. How often we can change and update this list? Whenever we want, or once a year, or what's the...
Well, two years ago, we had 17 water main breaks in one weekend.
No, I'm talking about the contractor rotation list.
You can change it anytime you want.
Okay, so it can be changed a month from now if things were to be resolved in any matter? There's no precedent that we do this now, it's five years from now until we can change it.
You would just have to bring it back as a motion, whatever you decide to bring it back?
I just want to clarify that for everyone in the public.
And from a legal standpoint, I think it's important to separate what this motion is and what it is not from a legal standpoint. Because I think that the council can set whatever parameters it wishes to set regarding emergency contracting. However, you want to make sure in setting those parameters that you're not doing something that might make us susceptible to suit. So I think that whatever the parameters are that they're using have to be based on the face of those parameters itself and not based on some other reason that might leave us susceptible to suit.
Do you have a legal opinion on that now?
I don't have personal knowledge of regarding where each one of these proposed contractors is headquartered. To be honest with you, I don't know. But I think whatever your reason is that you have, it has to be something that would be for a legitimate purpose as opposed to punish someone for something that occurred in a different, under a different contract for which there are different provisions.
I just said corporate headquarters in Rock Island. I didn't say anything about anything else.
You just said corporate headquarters is all you said.
And that's what I seconded.
You rescinded your comments, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, I am in a comment. Obviously, we haven't referred to contractors by name, but the contractor who did the Sixth Avenue project ran into some obstacles, but those are obstacles particularly on the 24th Street end that we've been run into by anybody who did it. You know, there are some mitigated damages that are still being in negotiation. I don't know where that discussion is leading, but I see this as an apples and oranges comparison. Anybody would have, from a Rock Island contractor, anybody who would have come in from out of town would have run into those same issues. I see this as kind of a punitive action. This is a contractor, the contractor we'd be eliminating has done excellent work for us in the past for both emergency sewer repairs, they've done excellent street projects. And I'm just wondering if this company has been given any heads up? It'd be like if I had a student and I failed them, I could not explain to them why they were failing. I just felt like it. I would, has the company that we're eliminating been given any opportunity to respond or told why they were under consideration for not being on this list and given an opportunity to rectify any flaws that were pointed out to them?
Well, I don't, I don't think any flaws were pointed out when I made the motion here. I think, I said the corporate headquarters had to be in the city of Rock Island. And every year for the past 36 years since this has been going on, you know, there have been contractors that were on it, there have been contractors that are off it. I don't know if they were given a heads up or not, but I think it's the council purview.
The question really would not be relevant in this case because the Alderman's motion was just to have people that are located in Rock Island. So he did not say anything about punitive damages?
Okay.
He didn't say anything about the other company?
Yeah, Chuck, I think you're the one that brought that up.
Well, I brought it up first.
Yeah, I never said that.
Any other comments before we vote?
I do. I, the company you're eliminating from this list are, I mean, they, the principals of the company are lifelong residents of Rock Island. I hear this council talk about regionalism and working together and, yes, Brant's corporate headquarters are in Mylan, and we have many partnerships with Mylan. And it is clearly a punitive action. And I think you can expect some sort of legality is what this council's putting the city in. And so let's have a vote.
Thanks for being our attorney.
Roll call.
So what is the, what do we, let's read the motion, please.
Can we read the motion back?
The motion is to amend the emergency contractor rotation list for all those firms that are in the, have their corporate headquarters in the city of Rock Island.
Okay. Roll call.
Alderman Foley.
Aye.
Talon Air.
No.
Hodel.
Aye.
Ship.
No.
Okay. Go ahead.
Austin.
Abstain.
No.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Okay, passed. So that motion, that motion did pass. Item 16.
Report from the city clerk regarding an activity application and resolution for the Quad Cities River Bandits 5K race on Saturday, April 8th, 2017, from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m.
Motion to approve the event as recommended and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion to the second. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
The roll call.
Oh, okay, that's roll call. All right, I missed that. Roll call.
Alderman Foley.
Aye.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Hodel.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
The motion approved. Item 17, other business, council members?
Yes, Mayor, if we could have Director of the King Center come forward.
Mr. Jones, would you come forward, please?
Yes, Jerry, thank you for coming forward. We had the King Center celebration. How many people up here were at the King Center Celebration Monday? Okay, for some of you that weren't there, there was some issues, concerns, or whatever. And as Alderman, people bring them to me, I'm bringing them here to get them worked out. So I do have some questions as far as how some of this was laid out, because some people got upset, got their feelings hurt. Our past mayor, Siewbert, was there and he was not acknowledged. And Mayor Siewbert helped build the Martin Luther King Center and some other people that are not here now. Can you tell me perhaps why he was not acknowledged?
I can't, I don't, we did not structure in such a way that we acknowledged every single individual that was on the original committees that helped bring the King Center to fruition in 1975, has not been a part of the program for the many years it's been, that I've been involved with it. So it was the same pattern that we follow for the past 12 to 13 years.
Okay. Also, our Congresswoman Bustos was there and her husband, they were not acknowledged. It was basically a cattle call. Okay, our new representative, Mike Halpern, was there. These are the people that bring money to the city of Rock Island, correct, Mayor?
Correct.
Okay. They felt snubbed or whatever, okay? And Mike Halpern, he just got elected. Our past state representative, Pat Raschur, was there, he'd retired. He would have liked to have something to say. Pat went over and beyond when he worked for Jewel and before to build the Martin Luther King Center, okay? The big thing was, we've had children's speeches and essays over the years that the little kids have came and said from what school they were from, what they called about Dr. King. That was eliminated. Could you tell me why? I talked to the chairman, Dave, and he said that the staff did this, which is you.
I hear one question or two.
A couple. Why was that, the essays eliminated?
That was eliminated due to the difficulty in getting candidates for the contest and being a little bit behind schedule in getting the theme into the classrooms. Every year, we pick a theme for the Martin Luther King Center Celebration. It is then the purview of the school to decide if they're able to incorporate that into their curriculum. We have to reach a certain timeline in which to do so. We also need to bring forth a committee to make those selections. So considering some of the guidance I received in regards to streamlining this event so that it fits in with the hour and a half timeline, where we're at in the creating of the event, it was deemed that that would be eliminated.
Okay, so...
And it was a staff decision brought to the board in January.
Okay. We were rushed, I guess you would say, to get the program done or out of there. What are the hours at the King Center?
Oh, for daily operations? Eight to five, but we work from eight to six to seven considering programs.
Okay. Why were we rushed to be out there like by noon? Was there a reason for that? I believe the people that were there in the crowd was what, 300 plus?
400 plus.
400 plus?
Mm-hmm.
You know, this is a great event, and this is the city of Rock Island Martin Luther King Center. This is not the Quad City Martin Luther King Center. This is not the regional Quad City Martin Luther King Center. The people that have put blood, sweat, and tears in there, which I had Ida to stand up and Liz, were offended by the way this came down. Because I've talked to them before and since. We should have been able to stay there to 5:00 if need be, but, you know, we were done by what, 12:00?
I believe so.
Okay, and I'm bringing these things to you because they've been brought to me. And some people wouldn't say nothing to you about it, but they get behind your back and say it, okay? This is Rock Island's Martin Luther King Center, the park across the street, the street and the center. This does not belong to the whole Quad City area. This here was the number one thing that was brought to me. Okay? Alderman Talon Air, were you offered an ad in this bulletin?
No, sir.
Did you see it?
I have, I have a copy of that, yes.
Okay. This shows Terry Brooks, who's running for mayor, on the back of this in color. Were the other candidates that are running for mayor, were they offered an opportunity to...
The offering to be a part of that booklet was done by media release. No one was contacted individually or personally to be a part of the booklet.
Okay. So do you think that was correct, or...
In an effort, if we were to extend any other efforts, we'd run the risk of showing favoritism. So we must be very careful, very conservative, where we would have a situation where someone would believe we were playing favoritism. So yes, I do agree with us being very conservative in how we advertise.
Because Alderman Brooks sits on the King Center Advisory Board also, right?
Yes, he does.
I'm sorry, former Alderman, okay? The last thing, the worst thing, people were offended by the speaker. And I have nothing against him and none of the rest, but we have over 50 ministers, rabbis, priests, some of them live within walking distance. Reverend Williamson, right across the street at Second Baptist. Reverend Barber, right around the corner. Preston Muhammad, Minister of the Nation of Islam. Glenn Evans, minister at another church. Why did we go to Davenport to get a speaker when we've got these excellent speakers? Was that the board? Was that the board's decision? Was that the staff's decision?
Historically, we have actually had speakers from all over the nation to be a part of the, to be the speaker at the Martin Luther King Center memorial service, including Martin Luther King Jr. III to be the speaker. Reverend Jesse Jackson has spoke to the Martin Luther King Center. And so we've never limited ourselves to just Rock Island. We know that there's a wealth of talent, a wealth of wisdom in our community, in our entire community. So that is the guidance we've always followed, and that's the guidance I utilize in making a recommendation that Pastor Mark Anderson would be our speaker.
Okay. Hopefully, next year, some of these concerns that I've brought to you today will not happen next year. And as most of you know, I asked our city manager to work on making this a holiday so the people in, the employees in this whole city will have that off. Because to me and other people, this is a disgrace that we, the Martin Luther King Center of Rock Island, have a street named after him, have a park named after him, but our employees have to work. This man died for garbage workers on the way down there. My daughter and I seen our garbage workers picking up garbage. Why this hasn't been done, I don't know, but I talked to Randy about it, he is working on it. So these concerns that I've brought to you, hopefully, they will be corrected if necessary. And the worst one that I heard was something about people from outside of Rock Island being put on the Martin Luther King Advisory Board. That ain't never going to happen, okay? Because these people do not pay taxes, and the history of that board is, we fought to get Martin Luther King Center in Rock Island. These other cities did not want a Martin Luther King Center. And for them to try to attempt to come in and be a part of it, no.
Reverend, Alderman, according to the bylaws, the mayor of Rock Island appoints all the members of that board, and the bylaw states they have to be from Rock Island.
Right. So I would advise anyone sitting out there that's listening, if they want to be on the advisory board in the city of Rock Island for the Martin Luther King Center, bring themselves, I'll be nice, I won't cuss, but bring themselves to Rock Island, buy a house and live here like the rest of the great people in Rock Island do. So thank you, Jerry, for clearing these things up. Because like I say, every day since we've had that, people have called me and came up to me at Hy-Vee, Walgreens, wanting to know, well, why was it this way? Why weren't these people recognized? We have to recognize the people that we're going to go to Springfield and try to get funds for the King Center. And the people in Washington DC, otherwise, this can crumble, and we're not going to let that happen. So thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Jerry, I just wanted to say quickly, I can't speak to everything that Alderman Mayberry said. And as you know, you've been in kind of public service positions for many years. You know that no matter what you do, somebody's going to be upset with some decision that you made. And I've attended the event the last four years, and actually, I think I was remembering back in the four years, I think only one of the four speakers has been from Rock Island. I've seen speakers from Chicago, East Moline, Davenport. I think this year was actually one of the best events of the four that I've been to. And for someone like me who has to work during the day, being able to come to the event and see the entire event instead of, in years past, sometimes it is so long that people have to leave and they can't stay for the entire event. In fact, in some years past, I've seen the room cleared to half or less of the full attendees. So there are perspectives. I thought it was a very good event this year. I can't speak to every complaint that he brought up because some of those I haven't heard or experienced, but I thought the event was very, very well received this year. And I heard others that thought the event was excellent, so.
Thank you.
And I beg to differ with you, Alderman Hodel. That event has never had half the people in that room leave, okay? That, every one of those programs are videotaped, and never have we had 200 people leave in the middle of this. Mayor, you've been there for years, that just hasn't happened.
The one complaint that I've received over the years was that the event was scheduled from 10:30 to 12:00, people had work to go back to, they wanted it to be done by 12:00 or 12:15. And the one year, a couple of years ago, it went till after 1:00. And people just wanted it trimmed down a little bit. And maybe this year it was trimmed down a little bit too much, so we have to work on that. But I thought the, I thought the event was excellent. We should have recognized the elected officials a little differently than we did, but that can be corrected for next year quite easily. And I, too, I love the students, when they spoke, they were a highlight of the program. But if they didn't work out this year, hopefully, they'll be back next year.
And I do, I do recall many complaints about it going over too long. I remember Reverend Ford got hit pretty hard with that. And I know, Jerry, that was one of the first things you heard because you brought it to our attention, that it cannot go over. And that's why you were so sticking to that time.
And we had the one speaker from Chicago that went way over, way over.
That was the 1:00.
Yeah. And I think that's the one you're talking about.
And that was the year where the room cleared out, absolutely. I didn't count, you're correct. I didn't count whether exactly 50% left, but much of the room cleared out during the event.
Well, if I remember right, the lady was from Chicago.
Yes, she was.
She was disc in the police department, okay? And our police department is always there. She was of a different faith, and people did not want to hear what she had to say, but that goes back to choosing someone. Choose somebody from our community. Reverend Williamson has been here for 23 years and has never been asked.
He was our keynote speaker, actually.
Was he?
Yeah.
When was this?
He did a wonderful job. I would, actually, it should be in your booklet, but he has been, he was a wonderful keynote speaker, actually. Superb.
Well, some of his members are the one that brought it to me also. But with the schools, especially the speeches, hopefully, you can work with the schools